Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of August 2nd will now come to order. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then if we have an applicant, they will be able to come forward and speak. Those in favor could speak first and those in opposition could speak second. We don't really have anyone in the audience this evening, so if anyone shows up, I'll give the rest of the directions when we have an audience this evening. So that said, we'll hear the first item from staff, and that is a text amendment to Chapter 23 of the Land Development Code.
My name is Jaclyn Porter, City Planner, presenting on behalf of planning staff. First item being presented is a text amendment to the commercial zoning district portion of the sign code. Review and recommendation, the purpose is to review and review the recommendations of text amendments to the Land Development Code, Chapter 23, Article 7, Signs, Division 2, District Sign Regulations, Sections 23 should be 197 through 23-200 within the provisions of the Land Development Code. The proposed amendment was developed by the staff as a request by the Board of Adjustments to address a common variance request for the allotted number of signs allowed on a structure in a commercial zoning district. The main purpose of changes are, or the main proposed changes are one wall sign per each side of a structure, except when multiple businesses share an exterior wall, in which case, one wall sign per business. Are there any questions for staff?
I have some questions.
Yes.
I would like to know what brought this about and if there are examples that we could see that brought this about.
The "see" is the questionable part, but because of, we require one attached sign per structure is the current language, is actually one type of sign per property or something, is what it originally states. So the variances allow for having signs on, say, you have a building in the corner, having one here and then one here, people are wanting to market it, their business a little bit more from various angles, so like on a corner lot, they can have more than one on a building, because now we're just one sign per building, and we've had quite a few go-to the Board of Adjustments.
So does the, does the proposed change address that this is only at a corner lot situation?
Yes. This allows for more signs for them to advertise on a structure.
Well, I read through, I read through briefly, but I didn't pick up on this pertaining simply to a building that is on a corner lot.
Well, the verbiage of each side, so of a structure, allows it for each side.
Oh, but it could, if it's, if it were something different than a corner lot, if it were standalone somewhere else, and not necessarily a corner lot.
I think an example, I'm trying to remember from the BOA meeting, I want to think of a Walmart parking lot, I think there was a business going in, it might have been a Quiklube type of deal.
I don't have any examples.
Somebody remember that, maybe, something like that type of business? And it was not a corner lot, it was in the parking lot, and so they were wanting it for all four sides, I believe, and the BOA did approve that. And the way this is written, it's not exclusive for corner lots, it could be something like that example. But this is only allowing one, one per wall.
One per side.
That would be definitely a variance still, per lock, if that was a new request, that would still be a variance.
So this, so this would allow one sign per side, so if you had a rectangular building, you're looking at four signs.
Correct.
And that really, to me personally, that seems like overkill. I know there was a lot of thought put into the original sign ordinance, I don't, there's not a lot here that explains why the Board of Adjustment sees fit to, or I guess Board of Variance, Variance Board?
Board of Adjustments, correct.
Board of Adjustment, why they're seeing fit to allow so many variances. I'd like to better understand why there are so many variances than to throw away what I believe up until we got this in our packet, that it's a perfectly good sign ordinance, and I think portrays a community in which, at least I like living, where we don't have a lot of signs around. I tend to be of the belief that the more signs there are, the less anybody reads them. So the less signs, the more things are read, the easier it is to find your way. That's just my personal opinion on it. Those are the questions that I have, I'd like to know more about why we got to, why we are where we are, and what some of the examples are that have brought us to this point. So that's mine. Do the other commissioners have comments or thoughts or questions? And maybe I'm the only one, they may have a motion to do something different, but...
Well, there could be some more precision giving. The size of these wall signs is twenty, up to 25 square feet, so 10 businesses, that's 25 square, five by five, that could be a lot of signs, big signs.
There'd be a lot of signs on the side of buildings, yes.
Would the businesses try to negotiate who gets signs and what space on the building?
It would be based on their storefrontage, so what, you know, their business frontage dimensions would be, that would be as far as they could go.
What about the side of the building?
I believe the examples I've seen for a multiple tenants, like a shopping strip, the one that's on the end has technically that corner, the side, and they came and requested a variance and got it granted to put a sign on the side of the building and the front. But there are multiple examples that we could bring back, if that's what you so wish, we could go to the, they're almost at every BOA meeting.
Yeah.
That, well, that I've been to.
Yeah.
Do these requests often get denied, or do they almost always like stamped through?
They're all approved, for the most part.
The ones I've seen have been all approved, but I haven't been to all of them, I just fill in.
And I've only been here for four months, so...
I guess that would be sort of a point for approving it, was if the Board of Adjusters is just approving everything that comes through, then I could see why someone would want to put this forth, just to say, "We're not going to go through that process anymore, because we approve them anyway."
The BOA does have, I believe, four standards that they discuss when they approve it, and if you wish, we can bring up those examples and maybe some notes of what they're going through, and determining why they believe that they should have the variance.
I would feel more comfortable making a motion, or voting, or something to have a little bit more information than what we have.
Could I ask another question? What does it mean to share an outside wall?
That's for those with the multiple storefrontage, like a strip center, that was supposed to include for those.
So it'd be on the front, on the street, not on the side, then?
It would be an attached, it was a wall, so the definite, so the full is the wall sign is an attached, so it'd be based on a shared wall space. So when you see a strip center, it's all one wall side.
So that would, again, that's the front facing the street.
For the most part, yeah.
And so every business could have its own sign along the front.
Yes.
And when you get to the side, usually in these strip malls, a business will go from the front to the back of the building, so that is not a shared wall, then?
Correct.
If it's an outside wall, it's not shared anymore, so that could only still have one sign.
Correct.
So it has to be a shared wall.
Correct.
Like, one would even wonder if these, if all these buildings are lined up to the street, they don't share the adjoining walls, they only have the wall in the front of them, it's actually, and it's not shared with anyone, it's their wall. The language, I wonder what the...
The language is ambiguous, I think.
They don't really, the only wall they really share is the wall that's between them, that's interior.
I understand.
So I don't quite get the language, but...
Colleagues, it seems to me that we have more questions than we do answers, so I believe it might be prudent at this time to...
If I may interrupt?
Yeah.
I do believe the discussion and questions are important for staff and myself to look into, so I think it's great that you're discussing this, and if you have other questions or clarity, we can make notes of that, so we can bring that back to you if you do table it.
Pictures would be so useful.
Sure.
Examples from around town.
Specific examples, and maybe minutes to show discussion.
And then if there's no example, because this is new, then have someone that's got good artistic skills to make one.
We have plenty of examples we could bring back, and the minutes that go along showing the BOA discussion.
It did occur to me, if there's a one outside wall that's five by five square feet, there's no reason why five businesses couldn't be all listed on the same sign. They would have, they'd be kind of, they'd have to cooperate on building the signs, so they aren't completely missing out by not having each one their own sign.
There's, you know, you have to think about that, too, depending on what your street frontage is, and how far away you are from the street, if someone's looking to try to find your business, how large the text is, how large the letter is, and how legible it would be, so that's something else that needs to go into consideration. So I think, I think it's nice having the, having the definition and limiting the size of the sign, and then I think certainly if something was on a major highway where you've got a faster speed limit, you're trying to be able to identify something, then perhaps that's something that could be looked at by the Board of Adjustment, looked at variance to see, "Well, in this case, this is something that seems to fall outside of the particulars," and that is something that I think could go into that, but, you know, I agree, I like, I like the, you know, the smaller square footage for the individual signs, and then we kind of get into some of the monument signs and such. So, I mean, all in all, I think, I think it's a good document, I just really want to understand a little bit more about what's causing the issue for Board of Adjustment to have to issue variances every time, what their criteria is, and what they are, really kind of what their discussion is, I guess, that goes into their decision-making process, to better understand why what we have is not a good fit anymore, if it's not.
And I will state, we did research other cities, and they have similar verbiage, so we kind of did a hybrid with our own.
So if you could, and if you can't off the top of your head, but when we look at this again, if you could list like what other cities you looked at, and that would maybe give us a feel for if those are places we've visited, kind of how the feel of that city is, that type of thing. Staff, feel like you have good direction for what we're asking for?
So to clarify, you're just wanting more supporting of why we're changing it, nothing to change in the text right now?
Right.
Okay.
Want to better understand why we're here.
Okay.
All right. We are, okay. Someone have a motion to table to a date certain?
At this time, I would make a motion to table to a date certain on August 16th, two weeks, would that be enough time for staff to, would you prefer 30 days out?
What do you think? I think we can get all that information.
We can move it to 30 days out to give you more time.
That would be great.
Yeah, let's do that.
So September... September 20th, because looking at, looking at the dates, so we have a meeting on the 16th and one on the 13th, September 13th, I know, I'm not going to be at that September 13th meeting, so my voice wouldn't be...
So at this time, I would make a motion to table this until date certain of September 20th.
I'd second that.
A motion and a second to table this item to September 20th, we shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda, I believe this is a, oh yes, okay, this would be another text amendment, also in Chapter 23 of the Land Development Code, this one looks to deal with residential short-term rentals.
Yes, okay, the second item is a text amendment to the short-term rental portion of the code to clarify and expand the section. The purpose is to review and recommendation of the text amendment to the Land Development Code, Chapter 23, Article 5, Use Categories and Limitations, Division 4, Residential Short-Term Rentals, Section 23-115, within the provisions of the Land Development Code. This item was developed to address the demand for short-term rentals in various zoning districts. The current zoning code just mentions RSL, RSS, and RT for short-term rentals. The proposed text amendment clarifies that short-term rentals in RSL, RSS, and RT requires a license, and that the short-term rentals are permitted by right in RTM, RMI, RMU, I can't read my own handwriting, T5, T6, Commercial Shopping, Commercial Business, and Commercial General. Are there any questions for staff?
Questions from the commissioners?
When, when is the city manager going to establish written procedures to address complaints?
Well, we're currently working on those.
So there's no timeframe for that, it's just TBD?
The ordinance does call for complaints and appeals, so once a license is issued to a short-term rental, when someone files a complaint or an appeal on that, at any time during their permitted year, it can come back for review, and then we can pull their permit. So if there's issues, police being called constantly, some evidence of issues, then their permit can be pulled, and there isn't recently a permit issued, no issued, just recently, and there's an appeal process going on right now with that.
I just want to make sure I understand, so when I'm looking at the marked-up document, and it lists eight areas that no longer, or do not require a short-term rental license, would these areas have required a license before?
Currently, they were not, it was not defined before, so it was just kind of up for interpretation, and they just did, so this is just allowing it, since it's a higher intensity of use areas, be permitted by right, and that way, we have it stated.
I got you, so they don't, if someone wanted to put a short-term rental property in any of those eight areas, they could just do it? Okay.
Which of these requires a special use permit?
So this section doesn't, they don't, none of them requires a special use permit for a short-term rental. So a short-term rental is its own process of a licensing, but in this section, it represents, it references the SUP process for certain portions, for whatever reason, and it's only the council's actions that it references.
So none of these require a special use permit, is that what you're saying?
Correct, it requires a license.
Yep.
It requires a license.
A license, but no special use permits.
Correct. It's its own process.
So seeing as we don't have anyone in the audience this evening, speak in favor or against, we'll go to a discussion from the commissioners. Would you like me to have staff present their findings and list alternatives?
Well, I'm just going to make a comment, I don't think this draft really addresses how to protect in the three zoning districts to preclude party houses, other than, I assume, when they come before the commission with the license request, then we can ask questions regarding that, and what we have before, like what kind of agreements have they established that the short-term renters need to agree to? I've just had people ask me about that, they just don't feel that there are adequate protections in place.
So yes, previously, I, you all have asked questions of the applicants, you know, "What are your rules?", you have contracts, usually they have property managers, or a company, online company, right, and they have rules and regulations, and that's a private contract, the city would not be able to enforce, however, if they're violating our city ordinances, becoming a nuisance, loud noises, stuff like that, then yes, the city can step in, but that's just the same as if you were living there, you can't really overstep someone's rights, it's still, they have an interest in the property. So if I lived in a house and owned it, if I had a party that was being disruptive, my neighbor could call the police, and they can come investigate, the same would apply in this situation.
What if there are multiple violations or complaints at a specific location?
Yes, and then there's an appeal process to revoke that license, it would come back with evidence we just, we heard, and then we can, I say "we", but the commissioners can decide to revoke their license.
So the license could be, well...
I believe it's under 115.5.
Okay, so I, and I may be, I may be confusing points here, so the, the eight listed, that wouldn't require a license.
Correct.
The ones that would, would still be the residential large lot, residential small lot, and two-family residential would still require that, but for the others that currently would require a license to come before?
It would be by right.
Right, so that, those wouldn't even be reviewed? So really, the suspension, revocation, notice hearing, complaint process, there's no change to that as to what we currently have, the change is really...
There is no change at all, actually.
Just the by rights?
It's just, and that's not even a change that was already by right.
Okay.
But now we're just making it very clear what's by right and what's not.
Okay.
Before, 1 through 8 wasn't even on here, which means they didn't have to have a license, and we're just clarifying, they still don't have to have a license.
It was implied before, now it's strictly listed.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
And if there are other recommendations of other sections that you guys feel need to be changed or looked into by staff, we are open to that as well, it's a very, you know, it's a new area.
This is a very open forum, like, this is a new area, and this is evolving.
Well, I mean, I will say, this certainly seems to be one of the hot buttons, when we do have hearings, is the short-term rental, particularly in the areas that are listed, the single-family, and in two-family residential areas, this seem to be the ones that we have a large turnout of opposition, and so it certainly seems that maybe some thought to, maybe how to address some of that might be worth study.
Can you rephrase that, so I can summarize it?
Do you want to, do you want to...
Could you state the process in Stillwater for a person who wants to have a short-term rental? What do they have to go through?
So they have, with just the city side, is that they have to apply for a license, and then we notify the neighbors within 300-foot radius, they have a 30-day period to send in an objection letter, and if we're receiving an objection letter, we then set a hearing for y'all to hear it, and then if they appeal that, it goes to city council, that is the current verbiage, is it for it to go to city council for review.
So in Stillwater, the only surveillance of this, what, non-social, or unsociable behavior, loud parties, the only control over that is that there is a license that can be revoked, that's it. And so that requires someone making a complaint to the police, right? That's where they would have to go.
Correct, yeah, because it would be for a nuisance.
The police would actually have to write a written report.
It does not require that it goes to the police, that is one avenue they can do, they can also go through the city hall and make a complaint as well, if there is an issue.
So there's a formal complaint process?
Yeah, it does not have to be a criminal action for it to rise.
But there is a formal complaint process, what would that entail?
You can come forward to city hall and make a complaint.
Who do you, who do you...
It can be anyone that can address it upstairs, and what's the, your apartment?
So is that person?
Yeah, city clerk's office.
And they're required, then, to take that to who?
It would go up the chain, and it would be put on an agenda.
In the what?
On an agenda, this is an agenda.
Agenda for the city council.
So just like, for instance, right now, no, it comes to planning commission, there's a complaint first.
Okay.
So the planning commission recently approved a short-term rental, we have an appeal of that decision, so that is going to city council for another hearing, for them to decide whether or not they will revoke that permit or continue the permit. And that was just by email, a citizen in 300-mile radius sent an email, it doesn't have to be formal, she just put in writing, "I appealed the decision," and we took it to the city manager, and it's going to be put on a city council agenda.
So it only takes one complaint for it to come back around? That's what I was looking through to see.
So for, let me see that, sorry, go back to that one.
15.5.
15.5, I was looking at two, care of two.
This does not say multiple, it just says that the violation, but there would have to be evidence, it couldn't just be, "I don't like it there."
Okay.
It would have to be evidence, disturbing the peace.
And so I'm a homeowner, homeowner, what kind of evidence do I have to bring?
You can have pictures, or audio, if you want to do a police report, you can testify...
So audio would probably have to have, would have to have a decibel...
You could testify what you observed yourself, I say testify, but express to the planning commission what you've seen yourself, it could be any of those evidences.
Does the city have some history with that kind of thing?
Not that I'm aware of, these are, this is a new round.
So there have no, there have been no party houses that have been shut down?
There has been no complaint received that I'm aware of.
Really? In Stillwater, okay.
But that would be for any residents, the same rules apply.
Yeah, well, it's, it's good to know that, because if we're going to address it.
We don't make it very formal, so any citizen that has a concern, staff will take that, and we will move through the process.
So it seems, in theory, I guess we'll find out now that we've got one that's pending through the system, but it seems in theory that it's a fairly user-friendly process.
I believe it gives people opportunity to be heard.
I've lived in Stillwater a long time and never had a party house problem, so I'd like to know if some, the police or anyone has some experience with that, to help us make a decision about how to handle party houses? And the, I don't know, what do you do with a party house?
I can offer my experience.
Okay, great.
As a homeowner in southwest Stillwater, and home next to me, went for sale, and a family bought it out of state, and their child attending Oklahoma State University moved in, along with three of their friends, they were underage, they couldn't go to the local establishments, they came to the house, along with all of their friends, parking on our street, making noise all day long, or all evening long, woke my children up in the night, getting up in the morning to go to work, and there are beer bottles and containers all over the yard, and the way I handled it as a homeowner, is I got the name of my neighboring homeowner, and said, "If these were my children in my home, I would want to know this," and told him what had happened, it got a lot better, and then they became of age, and it...
And then they became of age and it was no longer there, and then they graduated, and then we moved somewhere else. But they're out there, and, and it's very annoying. And like I say, as a homeowner, and at the time my children were small, it's really not fun to have your kids come and wake you up in the middle of the night, "Mommy, mommy, somebody's outside," because they're hearing voices out on what should have been a very quiet neighborhood street at midnight on a weeknight.
Which goes back to what I was saying.
I could have, I could have called the police, filed a report, and done something. I chose to handle it just going neighbor to neighbor.
And that's whether, that would, they owned the property. They weren't short-term leasing it. They had their child in it. So you could still have the same issues, but there are avenues to resolve at the same, whether it's short-term or an owner.
Well, it would just be a personal observation. If we're going to write restrictions on this, they should be, I mean, clear and usable and, and also effective. And so having some examples would help.
Even having been in the situation I just shared with the Commissioner here and publicly, it, it seems like until you really have something that is an issue, it's very hard to try to legislate subjectively. I, I think until we really have something that is a problem that the neighborhood finds really objectionable and they don't have another avenue, then perhaps something should be studied. At this point in time, if this kind, what I'm hearing is this, this first complaint seems to be the first one that's coming through that will kind of test the system a little bit, how things operate. That may tell us a lot.
There's two appeals.
Okay.
So one appeal is just a decision to grant them their license. And that's what we're dealing with now. And then the second avenue is what you're speaking of, an actual complaint, of a noise complaint, for instance. And that would come through you all first, and then you guys could decide to revoke the license or not. So it's kind of two separate. But like you said, until we have one, we really don't know exactly how the process is going to work. But we are open to suggestions if you don't feel that this is sufficient.
Well, it's probably true. There would be no way to really write something that would forestall any like, thing like this happening. Because the people that want to do this aren't going to go read the, the rules and find out, "Oh, I'm not supposed to do this."
Right.
They're going to wait until they get slapped on the wrist.
And we're not here to make it difficult on a citizen to make a complaint. It doesn't have to be a complete formal process by any means.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
Well, this is, this is mainly my opinion, but I have read some things because, you know, full disclosure, I am an owner of a short-term rental out in another, in another state, so it's not here. And neighbors got upset over one particular visitor. And so the responsibility really falls back to the homeowner. And, and they do not want that happening. I can assure you, they do not want that happening in their home. So you can do things as a property owner to reduce the likelihood of that happening by longer short-term rentals, by raising the rates, by, by several other things, by clearly defining what the rules are for that home and that one single violation of that rule will result in you being removed from that home. So I agree with you 100%. You can't legislate that. And you, you know, I don't know how you restrict the rights of the property owner if that's what they want to do. But I do think in general, the possibility of that happening is, is overplayed or overstated in people's minds. It doesn't happen very often. You do read about some crazy stories in the newspaper on whatever, about some house getting destroyed. And, you know, certainly those do happen, but the vast majority of people that stay in Airbnbs are looking for a nice place to stay that they can all be together with their family so that, you know, it's much different than a hotel. You have a common area to be in. And so, you know, personally, when we travel, we look for those because they're much better for a larger group. So it's, the party houses do happen, but they're not as common as people tend to think.
Okay, well, that, staff, would you like to, Jaclyn, give us your findings and recommendations, please?
All right, our findings. The text amendment to the Land Development Code is needed to address the short-term rental demands in the community. Previous versions of the residential short-term rental section of the code was lacking clarity in defining use limitations in various zoning districts. Alternatives. Accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed text amendment as presented. Find that the text amendment is appropriate for the definitions with the identified amendments and recommend the City Council approve the request. Find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a future Planning Commission meeting. Find that the text amendment is not needed and do not recommend that the City Council approve the request.
Commissioners, anyone ready for a motion or any more discussion?
I'd make the motion to accept findings and recommend the council approve the proposed text amendment as presented.
I would second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Special Counsel of the City Attorney's Office regarding state statutes, Stillwater's Code of Ordances, the zoning code, and cases of interest on planning and zoning matters.
No presentation for this evening.
Short and sweet. Our next item would be miscellaneous items from staff, Planning Commissioners, or the City Attorney for discussion and possible action. The one item that we do have listed is that the next Planning Commission meeting will be August 16th. And the last item is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. We are adjourned.